The exact performance back so April twenty third, two thousand twelve South Bend Common Council is now in session. Our rise for the invocation by Reverend Fred Preston.
God bless you. Would you bow your hands? Gracious and kind heavenly Father, we thank you for your love and your kindness. We thank you for meeting us here tonight. We welcome you in this meeting. We ask that you touch the President and every member of this council, oh God. And we ask that you bless everyone under the sound of my voice. Touch and bless each one, name by name. And Father, just take control of this council meeting. And Lord, we ask that you just give them wisdom and knowledge and understanding what to do and how to do it. And we'll give you all the praise and give you all the glory. In the name of Jesus, we pray, let everyone say thank God.
Thank God.
Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Constitution of which we share one by one. Under God, in the name of the Lord, the Lord is our God. So, Hordy, lead the roll, please. Mr. Tim Scott. Mr. Henry Davis.
Henry's here.
Mrs. Sherry. Dr. Furley.
Present.
Dr. Varner.
Present.
Vice President Oliver Davis.
Present.
Councilmember White.
Present.
Mr. Furley.
Here.
President Dieter.
Present, Mr. Hordy.
Nine present.
Thank you very much. May I have the report from the South Committee on Minutes?
I have reports from two separate meetings, March twenty sixth and April ninth. They both read as follows. To the Common Council of the City of South Bend, the subcommittee has inspected the minutes of the March twenty sixth and April ninth meetings of the council and found them to be correct. Therefore, we recommend the same be approved. Signed, Garrett Dieter, David Varner.
Motion.
I move to accept the minutes of her May twenty fifth and April ninth minutes.
Second.
Motion to second, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposition to that? We proceed to special business. Tonight, we will have five citizen youth and business awards that will be passing out, and we appreciate everyone who was there who brought their families and the people who were very nice, dressing up tonight, with the exception of Rosie. But other than that, Mr. Hordy, will you proceed with twelve twenty-two?
Uh, wait a minute.
Mr. Lanes.
Yeah, Mr. Lanes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Lanes is first about. Go ahead.
Mr. Lanes. Mr. Lanes says for the Academy of Incorporated. Live at twenty-four oh five Division, Mississauga, Indiana. My head, Hordy. I don't have to go into a long spiel because you all know what this is all about. If it hadn't been for you people on the council, we wouldn't be having our television, uh, channel ninety-nine. And for your support that you have given us, uh, over the past year, well, you know, it was knocked out before. Six years ago, I've been struggling for this thing. And we, we do need this, uh, public access to give people a voice. And, uh, we have certificates we're going to present to members of this council because you all deserve it because whenever I asked for your support and help, you were there, and I appreciate it. So, my secretary, Lori, or you go to hand them out?
Provided.
Okay.
Provided.
You know Gavin?
Bert Hordy will come and get those from you.
Yeah. All right, call him out.
That's fine.
Okay. Here. Gavin Furley?
Thank you, George.
Oliver Davis?
This is David.
Thank you.
You earned it.
Fred Furley?
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Henry Davis Junior. I gotta say something about Henry Davis Junior. Henry Davis Junior has been with our organization from the beginning of it. And he's walked side by side with us trying to get this thing completed. And I give you my sincerely thanks, Henry, because you're, you were one of us, and I appreciate that. Kind of go over anybody thinking. Tell you. Is Maripete present?
No.
No.
Any present? Let me see if Maripete gets that. Tim Scott, way down on the end.
Right, George.
Thanks, Ken, for your support and help.
Proud, sir.
And my old buddy, police officer, Garrett Dieter. Five minutes.
About a minute and a half now.
I didn't catch that. Oh, yeah, David Varner. He's been with us all along. He's been the guy that I have to call and, uh, beg him all the time and, uh, that you were with us. Thank you, David.
You're welcome, sir.
Last but not least, my little Karen White. Karen has been with us all along. You voted for this, and I appreciate that, Karen, because you're looking into the future, and what we're gonna do is look into the future with this television program. Karen White. Oh, I have one for her.
Oh. Where's, uh?
Yeah, one for you. You got it? You got one for Kathy? Okay, Kathy, you've done a human service for us, and I appreciate that. So has John Hordy. Without him, I don't think we'd been where we're at today. And here, last but last least, my secretary. You know what she does, don't you? She's, she's very busy. Lori Adams.
Thank you.
Me and Deborah Adams. These are the two that does the typing and everything for me and everything. Well, gentlemen, I appreciate, uh, the opportunity to be here. Uh, all of you people that voted for us on this, on this, uh, thing oversee the citation. And, uh, I, I appreciate your support and help. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Dieter.
All right, thank you. Now, Mr. Hordy, let's go to, uh, thoughts.
Twelve twenty-two, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, awarding Adams High School senior student athlete Rosie Green with the twenty-twelve South Bend Citizen Youth Award.
Thank you. I'd like to invite Rosie and Big Rosie and everybody in the family to come up, please. Everybody? That's all right. You go right here.
Is anybody left to know what else?
Thank you. So, the resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, awarding Adams High School senior student athlete Rosie Green with the two thousand twelve South Bend Youth of the Month Award. Whereas, the South Bend Common Council notes that the youth of our city are the hope and promise for the richer and more vibrant future for our communities. The Common Council is proud to recognize that Rosie Green is a senior attending John Adams High School in the South Bend Community School Corporation. Whereas, the council is especially honored to recognize that Rosie was named to Hoosier Basketball Magazine list for the top one hundred high school seniors in the state of Indiana. The South Bend Common, Common Council recognizes Rosie's many talents, both on and off the basketball court. With just some of the highlights of this lightning quick guard included his leadership and shooting ability displayed in the victory over Fair Heights the last November with his sixteen points in overtime. The win in which the Eagles had over Elkhart Center in January, as well as the great team effort in the, in the Sexton Regional in South Bend. Coach Miller developing many of the intercity NIC rivalry games. Therefore, on behalf of the citizens of South Bend, Indiana, the council pleads to publicly present a twenty-twelve South Bend Youth Award to Rosie Green as a student athlete who was a senior at John Adams High School. The council believes that leadership and athletic abilities of Rosie truly affect the council, affecting the excellence with which this young man has shown, not only to his family, his friends, his fellow students, teachers, coaches, and administrators at John Adams, and to the entire South Bend community. This council believes that Rosie is a great role model to all youth, and we wish him the best in his upcoming graduation and further in his life after high school and into college. This resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after its adoption by the council and approval, approval by mayors. And I would just like, on a personal note, I've known Rosie since our Pop Warner days, when he played against and then for me at, uh, John Adams High School. And I can remember probably about a year and a half to two years ago that, uh, I was working, of course, in Salt Rosie in an area town where he shouldn't have been, with the person that he shouldn't have been with. And it was ironic, uh, a lot of you know Mr. Scott, most father, was driving a bus, and we made eye contact about the same time, and just, we both had that look of, this is not good. And, and I asked Rosie a question. He kinda just blew it off. And, and Rosie was at that time in his life where some bad things started to occur. And it kinda culminated when, when Big Rosie came over to the house one day, when Rosie got into a little altercation at school, and, and he wanted to know what to do. And so Rosie got jumped. But then, when I looked at the tape from school, Rosie didn't get jumped. Rosie did the jumping. And he didn't fight very well either. But he has, he has learned what they've gone through as a family, what they, Rosie has done as, as a young man. To, at that point, I think Coach Phelps talked about that today, where one kid was, was shot. A couple weeks ago, Rosie took the path of seeing what he has done wrong. He made the adjustment of sitting on it an entire year to realize what, what he had, uh, done as a person, had to grow up as a student, had to grow up and get the respect of his family, and what he has endured by going back to school, doing the right things, bringing Adams back on the, on the map athletically, but more important, what I'm proud of him, he saw where he was at, what happened, his family got together, and he made the right choice of where he can go. And the future for this young man is unlimited, and I'm very proud. I'm just upset with the way they did the basketball tournament. They made Adams play two games in a matter of hours, because there's no doubt if they were fresh, they probably went all downstate. But that, that being said, again, it's, in my, in my job and my profession, it's very fulfilling to see people where you can have an effect on, on their lives and, and do things. And it's, like, again, I'm very proud that Rosie has made the right decisions in his life, and I look forward to him having a, a great career wherever he goes to college, uh, athletically. But even more than just his athletic ability, he, he's grown out a person, and I think he should be a great representative for the, the younger kids coming up in South Bend and, and everybody in, in the community itself. So, I'm very proud that Rosie has done what he's done. It's, uh, it's a very good story. So, I will turn that over to the council before we would ask for, uh, favorable recommendations.
Well, I certainly wish him the best. Uh, it would make the recommendation that we adopt this by acclamation.
Second.
Young man, I had the pleasure of watching you play ball this year. And I was so excited watching you out there. What, you were on what we call a beach. You, you get it done out there. Really, I'm serious. I played four years of college basketball. I've walked on to a college squad, and I was coaching one more another school. You got it in you. But I'm gonna tell you something. With an attitude and an temperament that's huge to play on that court, you apply that to every sector of your life, you're gonna go a lot of places. Not on that basketball court, because that's a short amount of time. It really is. And I'm telling that because I've done it. There's, there's a small window. But if you apply that to everything else, you may be up here, you may be in the mayor's office, you may be somewhere downstate, or wherever you choose to be. But the sky is the limit. Congratulations. Where are you going?
I haven't decided yet.
You have to decide, yes?
Okay.
I won my game of one-on-one before you leave as well. I still, I still got something left in here. I got a little something left. Congratulations to you.
Thank you, sir.
Um, I would just like to say, uh, when I look at your accomplishments and I look at your family, it reminds me of what an older man told me. He said that you were born rich. And he says, he's not talking about money, but he's talking about the family that you have right behind you and that support that you have. Always remember that.
Turn around. Just look at him one more time. Just look at your family. That's, that's the, the family that he always wanted to remind me of. Man, a hundred years ago, always saw me and said, you're born rich. And you are born rich, my friend. And remember that as you go out to make a, a difference in America, a difference all over the place, that you represent the family, you represent us in South Bend. When days are dark and things are crazy, and you wanted to make the, you know, just quit, I think about the people who I represent. And as you put on that uniform, every day you put on a uniform representing your family. And so, that's one of the things that I want to encourage you to remember, that you're born rich, and may God bless you.
Thank you, sir.
I'm the grandmother, and I can honestly tell you, I'm so proud. I have watched my grandson mature and become a young man, and I am so proud. And I'm so honored that the city is honoring him. Thank you so very much. We truly appreciate it.
Second.
Do you have something you want to say? I'm sorry.
Yes.
I jumped. Okay.
Uh, we have a motion, the second on the floor. It must be adopted by acclamation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Close.
Congratulations.
Mr. Hordy, twelve twenty-four.
A resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, awarding the Crock Center with the twenty-twelve South Bend the Business of the Month Award.
Mr. Hordy, good representatives, I see Major Webster of the, uh, Crock Center come forward.
Major, is it you? Are you with the group? Sure, okay. Photographer, resident. All right.
A resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, awarding the Crock Center with the twenty-twelve Business Award of the Month Award. Whereas, the South Bend Common Council knows communities need quality businesses and community centers who make decisions to headquarter their operations and provide excellent job opportunities. And they source for a variety of recreational activity for its residences. And whereas, the Common Council is especially proud to recognize that the late Joan Crock, the wife of McDonald's founder Ray Crock, had a vision of building state-of-the-art recreational and arts facilities in underserved communities. And this became a reality when Ray and, Ray and Joan Crock for Community Center, a sixty-four point two million dollar investment, located at nine hundred West, Western Avenue, on twelve acres near downtown South Bend, opened its doors to the public earlier this year. Whereas, the Common Council notes that a hundred ten thousand square feet of the South Bend Crock Center provides unprecedented place of gathering and enrichment, which houses the opportunities of education, sports, faith, arts, and supportive programs to deliver, which are designed, which are designed to stimulate the mind, the body, and the spirit to provide hope and to transform the life of each and every member of the community under the holistic approach of the Salvation Army, which encourages positive life-changing experiences for children and adults, which strengthen individuals and families and enrich their lives. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, as follows. Section one. On behalf of the citizens of the city in the South Bend, Indiana, and the Common Council, please publicly present to the Ray and Joan Crock Corporation Community Center with the twenty-twelve South Bend the Business of the Month Award. Section two, the Common Council thanks everyone involved in making the South Bend Crock Center a reality and a true world-class experience by providing five venues, which to include, which include athletic center, a fitness and recreation center, a fine arts theater, music and education venue, a spiritual center, and a special events facility near downtown South Bend. Congratulations and keep up the good work. This resolution shall be in full force and effect until after its adoption by the council and its approval by the mayor. And let me be one of a number of many to welcome you to the community and wish you all the best in the future.
Thank you, sir.
Have we any comments for the gentleman?
Sure, I'll start. Uh, I'd like to thank Major Webster and the entire staff, uh, there. Uh, probably at that Crock Center probably once a day, either to lift, workout, or dine on a fine salad, or any of the great things that they have there to eat. Uh, the things that they have done for the community so far has been way past anything I have, I expected of it. Uh, I think there are up to seven thousand people daily. You can see people using the fields they have for soccer, baseball, kickball, you name it, it's going on there. So, again, I appreciate everything you guys have done for South Bend, and it just continues to grow. So, I appreciate all the work that you guys have done.
Yeah, I'd like to echo the same, uh, sentiment, uh, President Dieter, uh, just voiced. Uh, thank you for being our community, and thank you for the sacrifice and commitment that you made thus far. I enjoy it, and I'm sure there are a lot of other people that enjoy it as well.
Okay. Move that we adopt this by acclamation?
Thank you.
Yep. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Major Webster.
On behalf of the Crock Center and its employees and all the people that we serve here in this community, we just thank you, Mr. President, members of the council, for your generous offer of this recognition. We, uh, consider it an honor and a privilege to serve alongside of so many other, uh, wonderful organizations in this community. And, uh, we hope that for generations to come, we will have the opportunity to continue to transform minds and to, uh, change those who come through our doors. May God bless you all. Thank you.
Two months. Thank you, Tony. Hordy, twelve twenty-eight.
A resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, awarding Diamond Martin with the April twenty-twelve South Bend Citizen Youth Award.
Council, uh, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, awarding Diamond Martin with the April twenty-twelve South Bend Citizen Youth Award. Whereas, the South Bend Common Council notes that the youth of our city in the hopes and promises for a better tomorrow are within our community. And whereas, the Common Council is proud to recognize that Diamond Martin is in the second grade at Coke Quilliard Traditional School located at twelve forty-five North Sheridan Avenue in South Bend, where William Soderbergh is the principal. Diamond's second grade teacher is Ms. Lennon, and Diamond's mentor is Beverly Arnold. And whereas Diamond is a nine-year-old student whose favorite subjects include math, music, and gym. And she loves to draw and paint at home and has become a track star by competing against all her brothers and sisters. Whereas, Diamond's love of reading and purchasing books at the book fair resulted in Diamond's mother giving her five dollars to buy books. Diamond knew, however, that there were other children who could not purchase any books. So, instead, she placed the five-dollar bill in the charity box on her teacher's desk so that other students would have the opportunity to participate in the book fair and enjoy reading. Now, therefore, it be resolved by the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, as follows. Section one. On behalf of the citizens of South Bend, Indiana, the Common Council is pleased to publicly present Diamond Martin, a twelve-year-old student at Coke Quilliard Traditional School, with the April twenty-twelve South Bend Citizen Youth Award. Section two, the Common Council believes that Diamond's positive attitude, her desire to help other students, and her ability in the classroom will continue to motivate her and pursue her goal of becoming a famous all-star football player or a lawyer someday. With continued help and support of her family, her teachers, Ms. Lennon, and her mentor Beverly Arnold, and the South Bend community, congratulations. This, section three, the resolution shall be in full force and effective from and after its adoption by the Common Council and approval by the mayor.
Will there be any comment? Anything coming in the council?
I'd just like to say that it's such a thrill to just know you, and we do expect to retain fun with you, and I look forward to working with you and for you to become a member of our youth council and you get a little bit of. Thank you.
Your parents named you well when they named you Diamond. And, um, precious metal, and you are worth precious, and you're sounding thank you. And, um, and I thank you for all that you have done and to look out for other young people who are in need. And I think that's something that if you continue to do in life, you will go very far.
Yeah, we, uh, we actually just had this sort of topical conversation. I'm not gonna tell you all those conversations, but we talked about this about fifteen minutes ago before we got on council floor. And, uh, one thing that I, I wanted to say to the parents, great job. Keep it up. Whatever you think is good to raise a child, keep it up, please.
Again, thank the parents, thank the mentor, thank everybody at the school, and the young lady. I think that, uh, you would be a great football player. Probably Washington High School, you'll be looking for some players. I appreciate the good job, and keep up the good work. And then move for a favorable recommendation after someone wants to speak.
Anybody come?
I was very, very fortunate to have Diamond Martin as my little mentee. And I feel so blessed that I've had an opportunity to work with her. And, um, giving away the book fair money came right around Eastern Pass all the time. And it was such a redemptive story for me and for my family that I told it over and over again because very few children with a five-dollar bill in their hand would ever give it to the charity box. So, I say thank you, and thank you for that wonderful opportunity that South Bend Schools has given me as a mentor.
So, we have a motion?
Second.
With second on favor?
Aye.
She's not gonna be able to.
Yes, she will. She's nine years old. I know. Mr. Hordy, twelve twenty-nine.
A resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, awarding Monica Murphy with the April twenty-twelve South Bend Citizen Award.
These are the type of meetings that I just enjoy. Very emotional, but this time I'm gonna ask Monica Murphy and members of her family to join me. Thank you. A resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, awarding Monica Murphy with the April two thousand twelve City of South Bend Citizen Award. Whereas, the South Bend Common Council notes that the life of our city is reflected by the residents who selfishly contribute to the benefit of our community. And whereas, the Common Council is proud to recognize that Monica Murphy is a graduate of Saint Joseph High School and was a member of the City of South Bend Youth Advisory Council, where she was challenged to critically, critically think about issues in our community by council member at large, Karen White, who was Monica's Youth Advisory Council advisor. And whereas, Monica Murphy is a junior at Saint Mary's College, where she is majoring in social work, so that she will have where she is majoring in social work, so that she will have the tools and opportunities to benefit the community. And whereas, in addition to her college studies, Monica is a life coach with a five-star life, which is a non-profit organization dedicated to inspiring students to maximize their human potential by helping them commit and connect. Life coaches challenge students to commit weekly to live according to the five core values and to connect by providing students the opportunity to build relationships with volunteers, five-star life coaches. Monica is currently working with middle school students, where she is inspiring youth to become ambitious thinkers and courageous leaders. Now therefore, be resolved by the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, as follows. Section one, on behalf of the citizens of the city of South Bend, Indiana, the common council is pleased to publicly present to Monica Murphy, a junior at Saint Mary's College and a five-star life coach with the April two thousand and twelve City of South Bend Citizen Award. Section two, the common council believes that Monica Murphy truly exemplifies the positive work ethic to drive into opportunities by daily impacting youth so that each of them will strive to reach the highest potential as future leaders of our community. Session three, this resolution shall be in full force and effective from and after its adoption by the council and approval by the mayor. I ask for your support of this resolution.
Thank you very much. Any comments from the council this time?
You know what, I figured I could say enough about Monica. So I'm gonna be at that, congratulations. And we'll probably see how many years now, maybe four or five, maybe six, maybe. There's a burning Hillary Clinton spirit in there.
As a person who has a degree in social work, is always nice to see another social worker coming along, making a positive difference in the community. And so your profession that you have chosen is highly proud of you, and it fits your deeds that you have done and that you will continue to do. So it's great to see a social worker doing that, encouraged.
And I would like to congratulate Monica and my entire Murphy family for all the great things that you've done, uh, continue to do and will do in the future. So again, like Henry said, it's a great thing, gonna be a great asset for the city of South Bend, and we appreciate all the work that you did with the youth committee during the year and then everything you're doing now. So I will make a favorable recommendation.
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
I would like to ask Monica to, I know she's never without words, and to give all her parents' opportunity that they wish us to do so.
Thank you so much. This award is an honor. Um, I love serving the South Bend community, and it is a promise that I will continue to use my leadership to help impact kids' lives, um, 'cause a lot of kids in this community are starting for truth in this world, and they have to be taught, um, how to become leaders. And so that's my dedication to the community is helping them, so thank you.
Nothing about the budget when you get up there. Yeah, I'm telling you, we're just very proud of Monica and all that she's done in the past and continues to do. Um, I'm proud of all my children and Monica, uh, very much. Thank you. Mr. Vorty, uh, twelve thirty. I'd like to ask you to come up. You're coming up? Go, find everybody up there.
A resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, awarding Lindon Grill with the April twenty-twelve South Bend Business of the Month Award.
Members of the council, uh, to the public as well, thanks for showing up. Uh, we have come up here, Mr. Matt, Mr. Alfonso Matt and his family, and supporters of his business. Uh, we definitely wanna honor them, um, and as well as the business of Lindon Grill. A resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, awarding Lindon Grill with the April two thousand and twelve South Bend Business of the Month Award. Whereas the South Bend Common Council notes that communities need quality places to eat fresh foods, and one of the first place, places which comes to mind is Lindon Grill. Yeah, it is, 'cause it's like right on the front of my house, ain't it? Uh, which is famously known for its great food, friendly service, and a home of original Ween Wednesday.
Yes, it is.
Whereas the common council is special proud to recognize that on the twenty-sixth day of June two thousand, Alfonso L. Mack, along with the help of his wife, Laconda, and brother Charles, opened the Lindon Grill Grocery located at fourteen eighteen Lindon Avenue, with its second location at four, forty-three thirty-three Western Avenue. And whereas the council salutes owner operator Alfonso Mack for spending countless hours in the kitchen with his grandmother and mother, where he was official taste tester for many of the family's recipes, and for later test testing many of his own recipes on his fellow basketball players and football players at Alprin State University in Mississippi, where he earned his degree in business administration. And whereas Alfonso's goal of serving only the finest products available and having them prepared fresh has resulted in countless people enjoying his wide variety of delicious dishes. Now therefore, be resolved by the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, as follows. Section one, on behalf of the citizens of the city of South Bend, Indiana, the common council is pleased to publicly present the April two thousand and twelve South Bend Business of the Month Award to Alfonso and Laconda Mack and brother Charles for being risk takers in carrying out the dream of opening the Lindon Grill, which has become a true dining destination in the second district of the city of South Bend.
I wasn't in there.
Second, second two, in section two. The common council thanks Alfonso Mack for not only his many culinary talents, but also for being a great partner to the city of South Bend community. Alfonso took an old building at fourteen eighteen Lindon Avenue and turned it to a great place where one could order chicken, burgers, fried turkeys pork chop cafés, desserts, and even oxtails, as well as many other delicious soul-to-go delights. Congratulations. Section three, the resolution shall be in full force and effective from and after its adoption by the council and approval by the mayor. Council members, I'll ask you to adopt this by acclamation.
Thank you. Before we do that, we would like some comments from Ms. White.
I would like to publicly say, um, Mr. Matt and his family, I don't know if individuals are aware, they offer caterers, and they have catered two main functions for my church, and not only the full outstanding of the service and the service, uh, that you were able to really, uh, experience for decades from now. So I would point encourage, you're looking for someone to cater, any type of event. I would encourage you that you, Mr. Matt, though. Thank you so much.
I appreciate Mr. Matt. He even adapted his menu to help those of us who are vegetarian, and having vegetarian chili is excellent. I've had it many times. My daughter's had it, and the family members have had it. And you're right across from the second district. You look right at, you know, honor you. Thank you for moving right over to Western, and I know you're on the second district side, but we come over to support you. And so, thank you, and, um, appreciate that.
Mr. Scott, um, this is what South Bend's about, uh, local, and local restaurants, local businesses. And I wanna thank you for that. And I also went along for my services as a chicken wing cake cutter. All right, all right. Thank you.
I second that motion.
Before, uh, you give the podium to everybody, especially Matt Junior, I'd like to thank you guys for what you've done, uh, not only with the grill, but grocery store there that a lot of people who don't have the opportunity, uh, to get to, to get to bigger places in town, they can walk to the store and pick up the necessities that you've done. And everybody that keeps, uh, keeps a good eye on everything there, appreciate all the good food that you serve that we believe that I'm at, so.
Sure, sure. Um, I did joke about second district, and he isn't twice in second district. But really, um, one thing that we didn't concentrate on, and I think that probably should be publicly announced, uh, Mr. Matt has been a very, uh, a good supporter of voter registration drives, uh, community cleanups, and everything that has to do with making sure the community stays alive around the areas that he's been in, especially on Lindon Avenue. So I think that I, as we are committing him on, you know, how great his school is and how the service is, um, he has participated in voter registration drives, actually still on right now, and as well as going ahead and making sure that people register to vote, vote, make sure kids stay active and clean up the neighborhoods, um, uh, participating in making sure that, uh, we have sporting teams getting, uh, sponsorships. He has been a clear-cut community guy for a very long time. And so those things we didn't say anything about because the food is so good. In your mind, it gets cloudy up there, but definitely, I, I really appreciate his, his service toward the community and commitment.
Thank you. Motion.
Yeah, motion. Motion to adopt this by acclamation.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye, aye.
Somebody has to say something.
Too many people there.
What else about bowling green? Come on. Hold on. Cheese. Cheese is appropriate, too. I gotta say something.
Good evening, everyone. I just wanna say that I'm so proud of my son, and I'm not gonna say it was only me. I had a lot of help. When they say it takes a village, it takes a village. But I was listening to a lot of people that they probably don't know is that one thing I'm very proud of my son of is that he gives people a chance that other people would not. When, um, guys get out of prison and nobody else will give them a job, he'll give them a job. When the kids during the summer, when they need somewhere to work and to learn experience, and I tell them, this isn't what, what you wanna make a career out of, but at least you can learn how to manage your money and how to make money. So I just wanna commend him, and I love him, and I'm proud of him, and his family, and also my grandson. But I just wanna thank everybody, and, um, Ween Wednesday, oh, he's got it going on.
Do we have any reports of city officers? Seeing none of that, may I resolve into the city of the hall? A move?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
The committee of the hall is now in session. This is the portion of the council meeting where bills are given a second reading and a public hearing. I wish to share with you that the bills that will be given a second reading and public hearing have been given a first reading and set for a committee meeting and public hearing prior to this evening's meeting. In addition, you will hear from the chairperson of the committee, where the bill was discussed and the results of their discussion. If the proposed ordinance is a zoning ordinance, a report from the staff of area plan will be given. In other situations, the formal presentation on the proposed ordinance will immediately follow the committee's report. We ask that everyone at this time, you turn off your cell phone and any other electric, electrical devices to their silent mode. At this time, I'm going to ask Mr. Vorty to please give a second reading to bill zero six dash twelve.
Public hearing on a bill of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending chapter twenty-one of the South Bend Municipal Code, Article Six, Overlay and Special Use Districts, Section twenty-one dash oh six point oh three, Northeast Neighborhood Development Area Overlay Zone District, to revise the single and two-family residential roof eaves provision.
Is there a committee report?
Yes, Madam Chair, the Public Works and Property Vacation Committee had a public hearing, uh, in committee on Bill six twelve this afternoon. It comes to council with a favorable recommendation.
You were the Z and A?
I was chairing the Z and A committee, that's right. Thank you.
Because someone wasn't there.
I got there late, so I'm gonna have to run up to that. Appreciate it. It's here for you all.
Assistant Senator with the Area Plan Commission offices on the eleventh floor of this building. This is a text amendment which is initiated by the Area Plan Commission. Back in August of two thousand and eleven, you as the common council through the Area Plan Commission and our process approved the Northeast Neighborhood Development Area Overlay Zoning District with a minimum and maximum eve width. Since that time, we determined that minimum and maximum eve width were not necessary for two reasons. First, some of the locks are just too narrow that do not allow for a minimum eve width of two feet, and certain architectural styles of houses do not provide for eaves at all. This comes to you with a factual recommendation from the Area Plan Commission. It's a small change to the overlay, overlay district and actually will allow the develop, uh, the rate. The enforcement makes that clearer or easier to enforce.
Are there any questions that confirm members might have? Thank you. I think that the Area Plan Commissioner, at this time, we go to the public hearing portion. Is there anyone present wishing to speak on behalf of bill zero dash twelve? Anyone present wishing to speak on behalf of this bill? Seeing no one, is there anyone present wishing to speak in opposition? Again, I see no one. The public hearing is now closed. Council members?
A favorable recommendation.
Second.
Is there a move in second, that, uh, bill zero six will receive favorable recommendations? All those in favor of the motion, I hear you vote.
Aye.
I vote opposed. The motion carries. Bill zero six dash twelve will be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation. Mr. Vorty, will you please give second reading to bill zero three dash twelve?
Public hearing on a bill to vacate the following described property. The street to be vacated is a portion of United Drive, Prairie Avenue, from the east right-of-way line of Scott Street to the south right-of-way line of the Norfolk and Southern Railroad overpass. A second portion to be vacated is said United Drive, beginning at the north right-of-way line of said Norfolk and Southern Railroad overpass, dents north to the south right-of-way line, uh, of South Street.
Thank you. Is there a committee report on the board?
Yes, Madam Chair, we'll do it this way. The Public Works and Property Vacation Committee had a public hearing on three twelve this afternoon. It comes to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. We have the presenters.
Please.
We have to state your name and the address.
Absolutely. Good evening. Bill Shalio with the city of South Bend's Department of Community Economic Development Office with offices on the twelfth floor. Uh, here today requesting to vacate a section of United Drive from, uh, the, on the north end from the intersection of South and Taylor Street to the intersection of Scott and United Drive. The section, uh, just immediately north of police station. We'd like to vacate this section of road to help further the Renaissance District project proposed for development on the, the south side of downtown. Any questions that you have an answer?
Council members, do you have any questions of the petitioner?
No, um, but.
Council member gave it.
Thank you. Sorry, Chair. I remember, uh, President Dieter, and I think I glanced over something this past morning with almost a crazy concern with the, uh, vacation, don't worry, uh.
Yes.
They were dressed during the, uh, committee's meeting for faculty. We also did receive letters from, uh, the police department as well from the fire department as well. Thank you. Are there any questions that confirm members might have of the petitioner? Seeing none, thank you for your presentation. Will now move to the public hearing portion. Is there anyone present wishing to speak on behalf of bill zero dash twelve? Seeing no one, is there anyone present wishing to speak in opposition? Again, I see no one. The public hearing is now closed. Council members?
A favorable recommendation.
Second.
Is there a move in second, and all those in favor of the motion, I hear you vote.
Aye.
I vote opposed. The motion carries. Bill zero dash three, that, uh, bill zero three dash twelve will be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation. Mr. Vorty, will you please give, um, second reading to bill eleven dash twelve?
Public hearing on a bill to vacate the following described property. Public hearing on a bill to vacate the following described property. The first alley to be vacated is the first east-west alley north of Howard Street from Notre Dame Avenue west to the first north-south alley for a distance of one hundred and fifteen feet and a width of fourteen feet. The second alley to be vacated is the first east-west alley north of Howard Street from Saint Peter Street east to the first north-south alley for a distance of one hundred and fifteen feet and a width of fourteen feet.
Thank you, Mr. Vorty. The committee report.
Yes, Madam Chair. The Public Works and Property Vacation Committee had a public hearing on eleven twelve this afternoon. It comes to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Should you ask the petitioner to state your name and address for the record, please?
Mike Dance from Dance Hall, an associate sixteen forty-three Thomas Drive here in South Bend, representing the petitioner, University of Notre Dame, the Renards, and the Pope Davises. As was mentioned, the council, what we're asking to do is to vacate an east-west alley that's located halfway between St. Vincent on the north and Howard Street on the south. The reason for the alley vacation, uh, on the west side along Saint Peter Street, we're going to take those lots and replat them for three new houses. And on the east side, that existing alley, uh, is going to end up being a driveway for two existing homes, as we had mentioned to council, that will remain open for emergency vehicles and for the, the public accessway. If you have any questions for me, I'd be glad to answer.
Are there any questions from the council members? Thank you for your presentation. We'll now move to the public hearing portion. Is there anyone present wishing to speak on behalf of Bill eleven dash twelve? Seeing no one, is there anyone present wishing to speak in opposition of this bill? Again, I see no one. The public hearing is now closed.
Move for the full council, favor please.
Second.
Is there a move in seconded? All those in favor of the motion, I hear you both.
Aye.
I vote opposed, the motion carries. Bill eleven dash twelve will be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation. I will now intone a motion, rise, committee members.
The move.
Is there a move in seconded? All those in favor of the motion, I hear you both.
Aye.
Motion taken.
For council's Allen, session, Mr. Vorty, third of six twelve.
Third reading on a bill of the common counsel of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending chapter twenty-one of the South Bend Municipal Code, Article Six, Overlay and Special Use Districts, Section Twenty-one dash oh-six-point-oh-three, Northeast Neighborhood Development Area Overlay Zoning District, to revise the single and two-family residential roof eaves provision.
Let's pass the bill zero six dash twelve.
Second.
Mr. Vorty.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
Mrs. Shea.
Aye.
Dr. Fred Furley.
Aye.
Dr. Varnum.
Aye.
Vice President Oliver Davis.
Aye.
Mrs., uh, council member White.
Aye.
Mr. Furley.
Aye.
President Dieter. Nine aye.
Thank you, three twelve, please.
Third reading on a bill to vacate the following described property. The street to be vacated is, is a portion of United Drive Prairie Avenue from the east right-of-way line of Scott Street to the south right-of-way line of the Norfolk and Southern Railroad overpass. A second portion to be vacated is said United Drive beginning at the north right-of-way line of said Norfolk and Southern Railroad overpass, dense north to the south right-of-way line of South Street.
Over the passage of three twelve.
Second. Mr. Vorty.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
Mrs. Shea.
Aye.
Dr. Fred Furley.
Aye.
Dr. Varnum.
Aye.
Vice President Oliver Davis.
Aye.
Council member White.
Aye.
Mr. Furley.
Aye.
President.
Aye.
Uh, excuse me, Mr. Scott.
Aye.
President Dieter.
Still aye.
Still nine.
Seven twelve.
Third reading on a bill to vacate the following described property. The first alley to be vacated is the first east-west alley north of Howard Street from Notre Dame Avenue west to the first north-south alley for a distance of one hundred and fifteen feet and a width of fourteen feet. A second alley to be vacated is the first east-west alley north of Howard Street from Saint Peter Street east to the first north-south alley for a distance of one hundred and fifteen feet and a width of fourteen feet.
Over the passage of eleven twelve.
Second. Mr. Vorty.
Mrs. Shea.
Aye.
Dr. Furley.
Aye.
Dr. Varnum.
Aye.
Vice President Oliver Davis.
Aye.
Council member White.
Aye.
Mr. Furley.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
President Dieter.
Aye.
Nine aye.
Proceed to resolutions, and we'll begin with twelve point one.
Uh, Mr. President, can we hear twelve thirty-one and twelve thirty-two for public hearing purposes?
If you get a second.
Second.
On the favor.
Aye.
In the opposition. Mr. Vorty.
Twelve thirty-one. A resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend designating certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as twelve seventeen South Walnut Street, an economic revitalization area for purposes of up to a five-year real property tax abatement for Lock Joint Tube LLC and/or its affiliates. Twelve thirty-two. A resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend designating certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as twelve seventeen South Walnut Street, an economic revitalization area for purposes of a five-year personal property tax abatement for Lock Joint Tube LLC.
Thank you. Did we have committee reports on this today?
Yes.
Uh, the community and economic development committee brings Bills twelve thirty-one and twelve thirty-two to full council with a favorable recommendation. Sir, Mr. Deal.
Hey, good evening, President Dieter, members of the council. My name is Rich Deal from Barnes and Thornburg with offices at one hundred North Michigan Street here in South Bend. I'm pleased to join Bob Strzwicki, the controller of Lock Joint Tube, to request your approval of, uh, resolu-, of both of these resolutions related to their proposed new investment on Walnut Street. As briefly described today, as, as the council knows, Lock Joint Tube is a manufacturer of mechanical and structural grade steel tubing, and they're proposing to invest upwards of one point six million to raise the roof on and make a, a large portion of their facility usable for manufacturing purposes, and an additional eight to nine million in new manufacturing equipment, uh, which will expand their capabilities and allow them to enter new markets. Uh, this proposed investment will, uh, is projected to allow them to retain their employees on Walnut Street of fifty-six employees currently with payroll of over two point three million and result in new employment of between seven and eleven new jobs in the first year with payroll in excess of two hundred thousand. I know Lock Joint Tube hopes that that number, uh, continues to grow. We'd appreciate your support and answering any questions, uh, you may have.
All right, thank you. Any questions from council this time?
I'm just, was not there this afternoon part of that part, but I want to thank you for all that you have done as a business resides in the dishes that I represent. I want to thank you for your, um, work, and I'm very pleased to continue to help you in these ways that you will expand your business.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone from the public would like to speak in favor of twelve thirty-one or twelve thirty-two? In the opposition? Mr. Oliver Davis, we begin with the motion for twelve thirty-one.
Um, move for the adoption of, of Bill twelve thirty-one.
Second.
Mr. Vorty.
Dr. Furley.
Aye. Yes. Aye.
What is it?
He's a fox.
It's sounding like a hide.
Dr. Varnum.
Aye.
Vice President Davis.
Aye.
Council member White.
Aye.
Mr. Furley.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
Mrs. Shea.
Aye.
President Dieter.
Aye.
Nine aye.
Thank you. Twelve thirty-two.
The adoption of twelve thirty-two.
Mr. Vorty again.
Dr. Varnum.
Aye.
Vice President Davis.
Aye.
Council member White.
Aye.
Mr. Furley.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
Mrs. Shea.
Aye.
Dr. Furley.
Aye.
President Dieter.
Aye.
Nine aye.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Mr. Vorty, twelve thirty-three.
A resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend designating certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as seventy-one oh-one Borden Parkway as an economic revitalization area for purposes of up to a five-year real property tax abatement for the Tire Rack Inc.
Thank you. Did we discuss the proposed terms of this earlier at the committee meeting?
Yes, we did.
And the result?
The community and economic development committee brings Bill twelve thirty-three to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. President Dieter, members of the council, Matt Edmonds, seventy-one oh-one Borden Parkway, uh, with the Tire Rack. Uh, we come to you tonight looking for your support, this resolution for the tax abatement, uh, so that we can develop a three-story, uh, thirty-six thousand square foot office space. Uh, we anticipate this will allow us to add, uh, a total of thirty positions, uh, over its first year, and a annual payroll increase of one point six million dollars. Look forward to continuing to develop our company, uh, the Tire Rack, uh, based here in South Bend, headquartered here with, uh, five DCs around the country, but, uh, this is our corporate headquarters. All right, thank you. Any questions?
I would just like to say thank you for your investment in South Bend.
Uh-huh.
And your continued presence in the first district, and what a local business can become a worldwide leader. So, I.
Thank you.
I'm supportive of it.
Anyone in the public like to speak in favor of twelve thirty-three? Opposition? Counsel.
Uh, Chair, please. Um, as the redevelopment commission hearing, there was, um, one, uh, hiccup I think we had, and God, I, I don't remember if that'd be, uh, discussed again, was all those things taken care of? It was something that was necessary for the tax payment.
I don't remember.
You wouldn't know, because, I mean, it was redevelopment, and I can't remember.
Yeah, okay.
I don't recall the issue. Okay. We are, we, we. Sure. Okay. See, I am on the way, but I was just wondering whether I'd taken care of, but it's lost, but I'm worried about it.
Therefore.
We have motion. Move for the adoption of twelve thirty-three.
Second.
Mr. Vorty.
Vice President Oliver Davis.
Aye.
Council member White.
Aye.
Mr. Furley.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
Mrs. Shea.
Aye.
Dr. Furley.
Aye.
Dr. Varnum.
Aye.
President Dieter.
Aye.
Nine aye.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Twelve forty-five, please.
A resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, promoting and facilitating greater transparency and accountability of individuals appointed by the common council to various city boards and commissions, and thanking these dedicated volunteers for their service to our community.
Council member White.
Yes, uh, firstly, I'm sorry, yes, committee, had a committee meeting and a public hearing on resolution twelve dash twenty-five and sent it to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. President, um, Bill number twelve twenty-five, um, is a resolution that helps us to, as a council, to be a part of the decision-making process by allowing our appointed bodies to give quarterly reports instead of yearly reports. The goal of it is to help us to stay abreast with the different issues, um, if a situation comes up and a, the point you know about it, it was, we were working on getting the right forms and everything else to keep our, um, council up to date, instead of just having an annual report where we will become, um, hear a report that happened last year, but we will stay up to date by the quarter, and we will work together to make sure that we have the right forms that should be suggested this afternoon, and so we can have the great, um, communication between our parties and this body to be able to take care of the matters that are at hand.
All right. Thank you. I'd like to compliment, uh, Vice President Davis for bringing this to our attention. There's a lot of things sometimes that, uh, goes through the council, and I appreciate the time and effort he put to, uh, make sure that this council is keeping abreast of everyone that we appoint in the different boards in, in South Bend, so I appreciate the work that you've been doing.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, anyone else like to speak in favor of this? Or opposition? Seeing none of that. Counsel.
Move for the adoption of twelve twenty-five.
Second.
Mr. Vorty.
Council member White.
Aye.
Mr. Furley.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
Mrs. Shea.
Aye.
Dr. Furley.
Aye.
Dr. Varnum.
Aye.
Vice President Davis.
Aye.
President Dieter.
Nine aye.
Thank you very much. Twelve twenty-seven, please.
A resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, approving an order of the Saint Joseph County Area Plan Commission, approving a certain declaratory resolution and an amendment to the South Bend Central Development Area Development Plan adopted by the South Bend Redevelopment Commission.
Thank you. The committee report, please.
Uh, community and economic development brings Bill twelve twenty-seven to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Sir, Mr. Shalio.
Uh, Bill Shalio with, uh, the community and economic development office, offices on the twelfth floor. This is a resolution approving the order to Saint Joseph County Area Plan Commission, which is approving a resolution of, the declaratory resolution of Redevelopment Commission to add three properties located in the downtown to the South Bend Central Development Area Plan. Uh, the properties were acquired as part of the Gates Property Acquisition earlier in January this year. Uh, the properties, as part of the purchase, were donated to the Board of Public Works. What the commission would like to do is get these under their authority, that can't, uh, transfer between the Board of Public Works to the Redevelopment Commission and to other properties during the acquisition list. So we ask for your approval of this resolution so we can move forward to begin that process so that we can do some planning and development of these properties.
Thank you very much. No questions? Anyone from the public like to speak in favor of this? Or opposition? Counsel, have a recommendation.
Move for the adoption of twelve twenty-seven.
Second.
Mr. Vorty.
Mr. Furley.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Um, in light of what was said, there was more plan, but I would get to see a plan for that area, and as we're reacting to buying properties downtown, our property in South Bend, I cannot be in support of that without, uh, some sort of goals in that area, so my vote will be nay.
Mrs. Shea.
Aye.
Dr. Furley.
Aye.
Dr. Varnum.
Aye.
Vice President Davis.
Aye.
Council member White.
Aye.
President Dieter.
Aye.
Eight ayes, one nay.
Thank you very much. Twelve thirty-four.
A resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, approving an agreement extending the Saint Joseph County Housing Consortium, and authorizing execution thereof.
Mr. Furlic, committee report. The Community and Economic Development Committee brings bill twelve thirty-four to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember, my name is Pam Meyer, with Community and Economic Development, and offices on the twelfth floor of this building. This resolution authorizes the mayor to sign an agreement that extends for three years the St. Joseph County Housing Consortium. The consortium is three jurisdictions, the city of South Bend, the city of Mishawaka, and the county of Saint Joseph. And what it does is allow us to receive federal funds. Only the home funds come through the consortium. Home is a particular federal program that relates to housing for low and moderate income individuals. This resolution will authorize the extension for another three years. It does not expire until the end of this year, but the HUD process requires that this information be to them by June of the year in which it expires, and that's why we're before you now. I would be happy to answer any other questions.
All right, thank you. Any questions from counsel?
Yes, just as far as the community development block grant, it doesn't think that allows for years?
This renewal, and the renewal of the consortium directly relates only to the home funds. So it is similar to the community ground block grant fund, but it's a different funding source.
I used to have a lot of concerns about the way we spend those dollars in certain areas. I know we don't hit that much for that many, but as in the past, I've seen where it appears that the plan, the plan of the dollars are already focused for years before, in the coming two years, down these four zones, and they own the list for whatever idea they may have in playing. That's the CDB, the CBD fund, GT fund, but also what these types of funds, and so, you know, what I'm going to get at, and I think this is something that I think will probably satisfy my curiosity. In the grand scheme of the overall plan of how we develop economically, as we're dealing with our housing stocks, as we're dealing with subcar housing, or housing that has been foreclosed on, and all the other issues that are dealing with housing, how does this plan to the development of the city and our housing stock that we are more than lacking to be knocked down, destroyed, you know, and have to screen away instead of housing? Is that a clear question, or do you need to restate it?
No, I believe I've got that. The answer with regard to the home funding is that when we receive the funds, the funds are distributed among the three jurisdictions. So I'm only going to speak to you about South Bend's funding decisions, because that's the only one that pertains to your question. We basically have historically, based on applications received, during an application process where anyone can apply for the funding, we have historically awarded funds to nonprofits that would acquire or rehab housing. They may build new housing, and that could incorporate maybe the demolition of a substandard house, or the use of a vacant lot that's in a particular neighborhood. We also fund tenant-based rental assistance for the monthly bill. So that would have nothing to do with the vacant houses or the vacant properties that we're trying to deal with, but would serve those that are in that capacity.
You know, I think I have a lot to do with that, and as a result, I think that what happens, and this is what I'm giving to my constituency, this is something that I'm completely unaware of, to be honest with you. When these things go through, you have people who get the funds, organizations of local nonprofits, like the Harris Foundation, and then you have field laborers who have the opportunity to rehab homes, and really never get the chance to help rehab those funds that actually live in those areas. And so what we do is produce a one-way ticket of the money that comes in from the federal assistance to have developed property, and as overall, maybe that one house or two houses on that block look a lot better than they were before, however, it doesn't lead us actual mission of developing or building a ton of the money to get in the area that is supposed to go in. I think that, you know, the conversation that I was trying to have, and I continue to have through the CED committee, is how do we tackle some of these issues? Because there are so many things that are out there that go through the committee. You happen not to be at that particular committee meeting that we had about two weeks ago, but what happens is that the council ends up getting these types of things before us, it gets approved, because we really don't get to the nuts and bolts of the minimum of the dollars. However, when it goes out, we are hoping that it's going to grow exponentially throughout the entire community, but it doesn't, because it goes to a CDC that is working on a project, and it kind of like divides the city in some respects. You see a lot of new projects going on with the triple N, and there are great projects that are just on one area, and it's not spread about in a way that it kind of like is even. Where's the equity at? When we have the same issues on a Burrison Street, instead of renovating on Burrison Street, we end up doing demolition on Burrison Street, but we do rehab on College Grove. They all are great projects, that's what I'm saying, however, we would like to see things being built and renovated in the areas that need it as well, that probably needs the most. And so, those are conversations I really want to have through our committee. I want to make sure that we're actually going to the areas that need it the most. I want to make sure that we are giving the dollars to people who can actually work these jobs that are unemployed as well. I don't think that the Harris Foundation has been a particular making sure those things happen, or they receive the money, or any other organization, because I would, you know, actually, I want to see their work record. I would like to see where they're employed, and how they're exchanging the money, whether it's all on a management cost, or is it more so a labor cost to get a project done? Is it going to be swallowed up by some type of administrative fee? You know, and we've talked about that over the last four years since I've been here, and I still don't see the results of all the money that's coming in, and how it's actually producing better results, especially in the second district. So I don't know if, there could be another conversation about these here dollars. This only happens maybe one time a year, I'm sure, and so, I would not be in support of this going through without more conversation, but I would look to see the plans on where we're going with these things, and making sure it's one plus one if you're actually equaling them two. And it's just not a project, and this is what we do in a dollar way, because we need it all over the district, but all over the city as well.
I hear what you're saying, Councilman Davis, but I would suggest to you that if you do not approve this resolution, then you would not receive any monies whatsoever. So the resolution itself doesn't have anything to do with how you award the dollars you may get. It allows you to receive the dollars in the first place.
I'm aware of that. Any further questions?
So you're saying then that, is there any way that the plans of Councilman Davis can be included in your thought pattern, and in more of a detailed kind of a situation? Because what I'm hearing from him is needing more of a plan for these places are awarded money, a plan about how they employ everybody, and what kind of resources they give, and everything else. Just some kind of way that you can include that, his concerns? Because we have discussed that over and over again, and Councilman aroused was the chair, you know, those long days we had with, dealing with almost the same issue.
Well, I would say to you that when we have come forward before and talked about specific awards of money, whether it be CDBG, or home, or emergency shelter grant, or shelter plus care, it's based on a plan, a five-year plan, a written document that all of the council gets copies of, and it speaks to not only the location that's a priority, but clearly the numbers that we project to serve, and the numbers of houses or rental assistance we provide, or whatever the programs are that we're supporting. So, there is a process for that, and can we have more conversation about it? Absolutely, but we don't do this in a vacuum.
Well, when you have the plan in terms of the different awardees, is there a plan that they have that are a part of that plan?
Well, they would be submitting an application that we would have to review, and make sure that they were number one, an eligible entity to receive the funds, that they have capacity in which to actually do the project, whatever the project or activity is, that they have, you know, the administrative structure that allows them to do that, that the city agrees, and it matches the HCD plan, the Housing and Community Development Plan.
And forgive me, you may have finished to us, but those who have been awarded in the past, has there been any record of their success of them meeting those goals? Because of the fact that what has been shown, that awardee A has met the goals of the previous year, and this should be continued to get received, is kind of learning and show that they have been in compliance and everything else that they said that they would do?
Yes, on an annual basis, we're required to submit a performance report to HUD. That's a pretty thick document, we also provide copies of that, and it's in various locations, your office, our office, libraries, et cetera, online. So every year, we have to report that to HUD.
Okay. Thank you, move.
Yes, another question?
Sorry, just one last thing. You recently sent us some detailed spreadsheets, and in the spreadsheet, I'm pretty certain the maximum amount of money that can be spent on administrative costs was included in that data. I mean, in terms of the question that's being asked, isn't it twenty percent, or is it ten percent that can be spent?
That depends upon the funding source. So, community development block grant allows twenty percent of your total entitlement you would receive as a community that can be spent on as administrative cost. NSP, the Neighborhood Stabilization Program, has a requirement of only ten percent. So it's different per funding source, but yes, there are requirements.
Just for the question about administrative costs, there were several sheets, the spreadsheet sent out of this information.
Yes, you know, and I recognize that. What bothers me is the fact that when our councilperson has a question about something that's been ongoing, and then they're not happy about it, you call a committee hearing, and you may or may not get the person who's over there, the department to show up, and then there's no conversation about it. And then when you ask it on the floor in front of the councilmembers, it's like a moment where somebody could say, oh, well, that information's already been handed in, and we have it. That's not my point. My point is to make sure that there's a clear line of communication to have with the councilmembers, and the city department heads that are implementing these programs. What happens is that we have areas that are in dire, dire, dire need of some type of help, some support, that necessarily doesn't get the support that it needs. And so what happens is that hearing this phone call from constituents, asking questions about certain projects that may be going on, or how can I get an opportunity to work with the Harris Foundation, or what they need to see us from the area, when they never ever get that opportunity to work with them out of the dollars, well. I understand this document, of course, because this document is allowing these things to happen. If we let this go through, then everything else is probably behind it. Now, I don't have a problem with discussing this, avoiding this on the floor, but what I do have a problem with is the outcome of this performance is out there. And that's what I'm looking for, I'm looking for the true outcomes that actually happens, and will positively affect the second district as well, the young district, and the city of South Bend. That's my issue, that has been my issue since two thousand and eight. What's on these programs? I'm not saying Pam is a bad steward, I think Pam is a great worker, a hard worker. However, what happens is that the planning stages of what happens in St. Joseph's don't happen in ways that all work in times. There's a little bit here, there's a little bit here, there's a little bit there, and so before you know the dollars are gone, and then it's like, where? That's why I continue to ask for a plan. That's why I ask for a plan when we're dealing with the parking lot situation where they do the same toy on us side, or Western, and Main Street. That's why I continue to ask for plans. So we have an ability to measure the outcomes and see where we're going. We tend to like to continue by seeing it's over two. We don't have a one-year plan, we have a two-year plan, we don't have a five-year plan, but we have a twenty-year plan, so we operate under the guise of, but there's still no understanding of where we're going with this. And that's my issue with this. We had a committee meeting about two weeks ago, and Mr. Don Neen showed up, and he shared in the conversation, we'll continue that conversation, but the representative for community development didn't show up. And so, whereas these questions couldn't have been asked two weeks ago, they're being asked right now, and so that's why I'm unsatisfied, and that's why I'm happy with some of the outcomes that have happened over the last four years. And that's why I ask those questions. It's not that I'm ignorant to what's going on here, it's not that I don't understand it. I clearly understand it. What I don't understand is why none of this was ever tied to a greater plan. That's why I understand.
It's my understanding, Mr. Chair, that was satisfied, Councilman Davis. And since we do have a time window, we have the deadline has to be by June the first, is there, and we have a couple of meetings before that, that some of the issues that Councilman Davis has raised can be outlined and shared in our meetings in May, and we still can meet the deadlines of this application, and also meet the deadlines of what Mr. Davis is asking.
Okay, before we do that, we're going to go to the public first. Anyone like to speak in favor of twelve thirty-four?
My name is Vera Lefiel, and I'm at twenty-seven fifteen Bonds Avenue, South Bend, Indiana. And I'm not necessarily in opposition, but I needed to get clarified a question. And that was that you said that if Henry Davis does not, he's my councilman, if he does not vote for this, there's no money in the area, or in his district, that can be used. That was...
No, no money, period.
What I intended to convey was that if this resolution doesn't pass, it doesn't authorize the mayor to sign the agreement that will continue the body called the consortium. And that would mean that one of the three jurisdictions does not want to continue that consortium. That means that HUD would then not be able to send the dollars that they send to us for whatever programs we choose to come to South Bend.
That's consistent to him, but his district would not get it. The second concern that I have, in regards to what Henry Davis is saying, I've had a concern for the last two or three years that I've been downtown, over and over again. We had a lot of work done in my area, and I'm very dissatisfied. And we was here last year stating that over and over again. And the great concern that I have, that there are no minorities working on the streets, working on any of the projects, no minorities, I have been to everybody from the mayor down last year with my concern. And I would love to see some minorities working in our districts, and I would like to see more work done in the minority districts. Because we are just falling apart, and we're not only minorities, there are other whites there too, and other people. And I would like to see more of minorities, and not women minorities, that'll fight women being a minority. I'd like to see some blacks and some Hispanics working.
All right, thank you. Anyone else like to speak against?
My name is Isaac Hunt, owner of Ice Services here in South Bend. I do housing rehab for Catalina, Georgetown, and Jefferson, Housing Authority of South Bend, the South Park. And I've been trying to get into housing authority and inheritance for three or four years now. I think this resume needs to be passed, and I think it also needs to have a council meeting to determine how these bids are being awarded to companies. Because I think it's a biased situation on how the bids are being rewarded as far as when it comes down to insurance, and things of that nature. However, all the insurance and everything is needed to cover, to be able to, uh, bring bids, and my reputation, and my work ethic, and my job speaks for itself. But in order to be able to get some of these bids through the housing, right now, the small business bid first started in the housing authority. Where we were three or four companies being able to be able to work and rehab houses, now you have one owner that has over a two-hundred-and-fifty to five-hundred-thousand-dollar contract to rehab houses here, and she don't even live in the city. She live a lake near. She don't pay any taxes here. Here I am, paying taxes here in the city, you know, I'm involved in the community, in different organizations, but I give my time and everything else, and I can't get contracts here in my own city to provide work for people who needs it. I have people from Goodwill, I have people who are not able to get jobs, and I try to give them opportunities to be able to build their business, but I have to have an opportunity to be able to sit at the table. And I think what Harry is saying, as far as being able to have a consortium, a meeting to be able to sit down and talk about these things, of where this money's been allocated to, and how it's being awarded, is very needed, not just with heritage, but also with the housing authority and the different organizations that's receiving this funds. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else like to speak in opposition?
Jesse Davis, thirteen thirty-three, Tower Street, South Bend. I want to thank Henry for keeping an eye on some of the dollars. I think hopefully every council member will start doing that. We have a lot of dollars that fly through this city and go in every direction. I've had the opportunity to put some septic in, which is a very big necessity, in a person's home, obviously, when you flush your toes, you want things to go away and not have to worry about it. And I did some work, the head fund, HUD grants, involved in it, and had to deal with the housing authority. So they do a lot of good things, but I do think we need to keep track of what dollars are coming in here, federal money, whether it's with this program or any other program in the city.
Thank you. Anyone else in opposition? Return to the council.
I would like to suggest, since we do have time, if I'm not mistaken, this might, we have until June, to take action. And I understand that we do have some questions, and also at committee meetings today, there was the issue of the special trees. I would like to suggest or recommend that we schedule a committee meeting to discuss this issue, and give administration opportunity to reinforce those assets that were at the committee level, and that this be sent back to the Community Economic Development Committee.
I second that.
Any, first we'll go with some...
Just a question, and reset for May fourteen.
Yes, not the fourteen.
Not the fourteen.
Well, can we have a...
That's the next thing.
Well, can we have a meeting outside of the fourteen?
Well, committee meeting.
If the first, before we do that, any rebuttal to the people in our position, if you'd like to...
Separate meeting.
No, I'm not certain, we all have the, we're all working from the same information, so until that's the case, I don't think it's fair to respond.
I mean, separate meetings, the only thing about the meeting on the fourteen, I want it crowded up, so we only have a ten-minute meeting on that. If we could have a, if we could have a meeting outside of that meeting, it would be out of the record, Mr. Chair, or Mr. President?
I would definitely like to have a committee meeting, I'll try to, on committee schedule day, meeting on the second or fourth Monday.
I would second that.
So, you know, I would definitely like to entertain that as well. Again, don't get me wrong, I am not against the dollars by no means, but just imagine Pam, you do a wonderful job, it's just the same thing, and the same results over and over again.
So, we will have, make a motion then, to continue this?
We can have a motion already.
Can we? You'll make a motion, and I second, and you second, you will be in charge then, since I'm part of the committee. Councilman Davis, pick a day.
However, it will be reset from May fourteen to the public.
Yes.
That's correct.
That's correct. All right. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Any opposition?
Cool.
Thank you. Twelve thirty-five.
You're welcome. Twelve thirty-five. A declaratory resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana... Twelve thirty-five. A declaratory resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, authorizing a property tax exemption for certain enterprise information technology equipment. Pursuant to Indiana Code six dash one point one dash ten dash forty-four, Data Realty Northern Indiana LLC project located at fourteen forty Ignition Drive in the sixth district, sixth top of the...
Thank you. Committee report.
The Community and Economic Development Committee brings bill twelve thirty-five to the full council with its favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Great job, Mr. Ings.
Thank you. Uh, good evening, council members. My name is Don Ings with the Department of Community and Economic Development with offices on the twelfth floor of this building. Uh, in March of two thousand and eleven, the South Bend Common Council approved a resolution, uh, supporting a recent change in state law allowing for property tax exemption for qualified information technology equipment, uh, sometimes referred to as data center equipment. Um, and, uh, as part of that resolution, there was a proposed described in, uh, prescribed in forms, uh, for moving ahead with individual projects. This evening, we have the first project, a data center in South Bend. This is for Data Realty at Ignition Park. Um, the declaratory resolution is being presented tonight. The next steps would be a public hearing and a confirming resolution. Uh, attached to the declaratory resolution is an agreement from the company, uh, indicating that they meet all of the state law requirements for this type of property tax exemption. The project is in excess of ten million dollars. The wages being paid are in excess of a hundred and twenty-five percent of the county average. Uh, as a part of this project, not only will there be some property tax, uh, tax exempt, um, but also there will be taxable property, over eight million dollars of taxable property involved in the project. I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have, and Rick Carlton is here again this evening to answer any questions you may have with him. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
Great.
See none. Anyone like to speak in favor? Or opposition?
Counsel, may I have a recommendation?
Move for the adoption of, um, twelve thirty-five.
Yeah.
Word.
Uh, Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
Mrs. Shea.
Aye.
Dr. Furlough.
Aye.
Dr. Vernon.
Aye.
Vice President Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Mr. Furlough.
Aye.
President Dieter.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. We're going to first reading now, Mr. Wardy. Let's go to thirteen twelve.
First reading on a bill of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending section twenty dash twenty of Article One, Chapter twenty, vehicles and traffic of the South Bend Municipal Code addressing safety regulations when passing bicycles.
Move to thirteen twelve, go to help the public safety. Be set for second, third reading and public hearing on five fourteen.
Second. Motion second, all in favor of that one?
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you. Fourteen oh.
First reading on a bill of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending Chapter Two, Article Three, Section two dash twelve point three of the South Bend Municipal Code addressing procedure for addressing citizen appointments.
Move that bill fourteen twelve, go to the council rules committee and be set for second, third reading on May fourteen. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Fifteen twelve.
First reading on a bill of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending Chapter Two, Article Eight, by the inclusion of the South Bend Municipal Code by, uh, let's see. Uh, by the inclusion of the South Bend Municipal Code, code by the inclusion of new section two dash one-two-three, uh, one-twenty-three point two, addressing regulations and reporting mechanisms on the city usage of alternative fuels, compressed natural, n- natural gas, CNG, and liquefied natural gas, LNG, and related energy efficiencies.
Move to fifteen twelve, be sent to Public Works and Property Vacation Committee, set for second, third reading and public hearing on five fourteen.
Second.
Motion second on that one. Mr. Wardy, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you. Sixteen twelve, please.
I'll try. First reading on a bill of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, authorizing the execution of an amendment to the lease with the city of South Bend Building Corporation dated as of April first, two thousand and three, as amended, previously entered into for the construction and equipping of a new central fire station and renovating and expanding the police station and regarding certain related matters.
Move to fifteen twelve, go to help in public safety. Be set for second, third reading and public hearing on five fourteen.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Under unfinished business, may I have a motion to send?
The proper motion on, uh, here on eighteen is to, uh, have first and second reading of public hearing, uh, on Tuesday, May twenty-eighth, send it to zoning and annexation, and third reading on June eleventh.
I'll move.
Motion second on that, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Any other unfinished business?
Excuse me, should be the twenty-ninth, Tuesday.
Tuesday, twenty-ninth.
Thank you. That's, we're good on that. Any other unfinished business?
You know, I just wanna, uh, President, I'm sorry, make sure that, uh, you all, you know, and as you saw, uh, some of the, I, some of the, I just wanted to make sure that you all were aware of, uh, of the, uh, the opportunity of, uh, of the, uh, staying in jobs, uh, in, uh, the horizon. And if you have opportunity tomorrow, if you're available, uh, I would encourage you to be, through the conversations you were hearing, we, uh, many facilities, and sort of where many guys do as well. And for those who are not aware of what I'm talking about, uh, we have a gentleman, Mr. Rick Reed, uh, he's bought the Suited Baker Plan, and he's working at, uh, Concept Cars, and the dog, he, obviously, uh, uh, cars, named Suited Baker. Uh, this afternoon, we had an opportunity to go before the Suited Baker Museum, and look up some of the things that they were doing, uh, when Suited Baker was open. So, at the very least, it's a very, very good opportunity for us to go into the city and save the lives, and thank you for the interest. At the very best, you may end up with a car rental here in Buffalo, and that will bring, uh, obviously, tax dollars and, uh, also jobs to the area. So, uh, there's not a loss in the end, though. Welcome, others into the city. And so, today, we had, uh, with a team that came from, uh, Florida. He came from Denver. Another gentleman came from Arizona, and another guy drove down by, by Imperial Canada. And so, clearly, there's, uh, eyes are on South Bend right now. And, uh, again, um, you press your email with the rest of the information. If not, you can give me a call or contact me, but I have a long block to do right now.
Right, thank you. Any new business before the council?
Yes, Mr. President. I'd like to thank all of, um, our council members for signing this letter. So, and I'd like to have our clerk later on to make sure that all of our media have a copy of this letter that we signed tonight. I'll read it into the record. It's, um, on April twenty-third, two thousand and twelve, is to Commissioner Andrew Stellner, President, um, Board of Commissioners of San Joe County, seventh floor, and to Mr. Raphael Morton, County Council President. This is regarding the vote centers, says dear President Stellner, and President Morton. Recently, it was reported by the news media that, um, the current two hundred and twenty polling places in San Joe County may be reduced to a total of twenty-five vote centers. The news media also reported that the Board of County Commissioners welcome input on this proposal. As you are well aware, the city of South Bend typically budgets over a two-year period to require money for private election costs involved with the city elections. Such costs are typically calculated by the county auditor and then sent to the city controller, who then includes the appropriate line item in the city budget. Although there are studies which show that the vote centers may help control local government's costs, the overall impact on voter turnout may also be valid criteria, which should be further studied. The undersigned members of the South Bend Common Council believe, and I should note that all the council members are signed, the, the undersigned members of the South Bend Council believe that a broad-based study committee, which includes the representatives of our common council, should be appointed to carefully study whether a vote center concept would be appropriate in San Joe County. We have had the opportunity to view, view many of the items posted on the Indiana State Department's website on vote centers, which are available online at www.votecenters.in.gov. The seven-step process, which is outlined on that website, which includes a study committee as well as proposed plan, we believe would be a good way to gather inputs from the residents of San Joe County. We look forward to being included on this important matter, and look forward to your updates. Thank you most sincerely, and the members of our, um, common council online have signed us, and this is also cc to Commissioner Bob Provoz, Commissioner Dave Thomas, council members, um, Mark Cantador and Dale Devine. And, um, we thank you for this. And so, we will, I'm gonna make sure all of our media and everyone gets this copy of the vote centers. All right, thanks. The original, our, um, attorney has, um, and she has stated that, um, uh, we all want to have a process in this because there is a seven-step process, which has not begun here in San Joe County, and we want to be included in that process since it all affects, not only the county elections, but also city elections that are part of it. So, all of us should have a seat at the table.
Okay. Any other new business?
Yes, Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd like to thank, uh, citizens of South Bend and council members Karen Light, Evan Furlough, Grant Furlough, uh, Dallas Dieter on patrol, and Henry Davidson Spirit for, um, helping out with the, uh, ten eighty building, the doctor block, where we cleaned over two hundred city blocks, uh, citizens' involvement with, uh, city services to pick up trash for two hundred blocks within the first and second districts. And, um, ten years ago, we threw out nine blocks. We're up to two hundred city blocks. Uh, it's a great improvement, and I want to thank everybody being part of the team.
Any other new business before the council? See, none of that. It's now time for privilege of the floor. This is a time when members of the public may address the council on any item that's not, was not listed on the agenda tonight. You may give your name and address and briefly present your comments. It will be a maximum of three minutes per person. If you have a formal response, or you have any questions you want to raise, I think Mr. Wardy has a forum if you want us to get back. If you just want to come up there and speak what's on your mind, you may do that. Again, this is not a give and take. This is your time to speak. Uh, none of the council members will respond to you, other than myself assigning it to committee afterwards.
Good evening, members of the council. I'm sure, sure to speak for the reason we're here tonight, so there's no need to, um, give a long dissertation on that. We have, uh...
Excuse me, sir, we need your name and address.
I'm sorry. I need, thank you very much, uh, Mr. Dieter. My name is Mario Sims. I live at two-three-seven, seven-eight Grove in South Bend, Indiana. Um, we have been endeavoring to gather signatures on two open letters. One to Eric Holder, uh, who is obviously the U.S. Attorney General, and the other is, uh, to the ACLU, uh, to their executive director. Unfortunately, we've had to do this because numerous citizens have asked the mayor to, uh, play the tapes that were made in the police department. Um, unfortunately, the mayor's given a number of different reasons. None of them, uh, check out. None of them are valid. None of them are legal. And I would just quickly point out, uh, if those of you who question what I mean by that, we have historical precedent in Watergate. President Nixon tried the same thing. In fact, he even went to the, uh, the length of firing a special prosecutor, uh, if you recall. It didn't work out very well for President, uh, Nixon. And we're simply here tonight to let the council know that there has been an outcry like I've never seen in South Bend before, across the board, across color lines, across economic stra- uh, economic strata. In fact, I was moved today as we were getting signatures to see former council member Andy Zello, uh, who could barely walk, huddled up, and with a very sad face, take a pen and sign it and said, "We need to hear those tapes." We have the two letters tonight. They'll be going to Senator Luger tomorrow. Uh, Senator Luger will be making a presentation to Eric Holder, uh, and also his staff will be ensuring that the ACLU gets them. We simply ask the council tonight of those members who would like to join the citizenry and asking the mayor to, um, honor his campaign commitment for transparency and justice, to join us, to join with the other citizens, and sign the letter. We'll make it available at the council meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Greg Brown, twelve thirty-eight Diamond. Reverend Greg Brown is concerned, not just about the tapes, but we need some communication. If we can't communicate with the mayor, and he can't communicate with you, we don't have nothing in this community. Um, I was privileged to be at a meeting with Henry Davis, and they, uh, had a gentleman come there, Mr. Kelly. He said that he was hired by the mayor. He's from Baltimore. Carolina houses in the area. I've been in my house forty-seven years. Everybody knocked on the door or anything. You probably seen it on television, Mr. Dieter. They're digging. I got sewers in the basement, and there's no communication. You call the mayor's office, they say it's not our problem. Go to the engineer department. There's so much broke-down communication, and it's, it's no unity. I could walk around all day saying I want the tapes. If we don't have nothing to hide, then we want the tapes. But we have to break down and gather together, together, together. And not having to be able to come in and talk to the mayor, and the mayor here is like the council board is hearing this, Mr. Dieter. We don't have anything. And there's so many things going on. I said and listened. I listened to everything that's being said. Us as a people, it's not a white thing. It's not a black thing. It's a right thing. There are people removed from their jobs. The media reports it how it's coming. But we want to know. We really want to know. I've heard transparency. I hear diversity. I've heard all of those big words and all them things. But it's time that we make a change. And we stand in this people. I stand for the community. I'm out here every day trying to bring unity to this community. I'm a youth minister. I work with all the high schools. I'm out here every day. And I want to see a change in this community. And anything that I can do with the council board that's gonna bring unity back to this community, we gotta start at the top. And if this starts at the mayor's office, then we want to know where the tapes are. If we can't wake you up, we don't shake you up.
My name is Samuel Brown. I live in South Bend, Indiana, at two-two-two, East Navarre Street in South Bend. And I'm also very concerned about the tapes that the mayor would not release. Most of concerned that he would take a group of people to his home and try to divide the people in the community. We got a lot of unity out here. A lot of people want to hear the tape, like I said, black and white and Hispanics. It's a community thing. The thing that bothers me the most is, is what Mr. Penny said. She said, "I haven't done nothing wrong. I'm trying to save this city from some embarrassment." And my mother always told me, she used to say, "When there's smoke, there's fire." And I believe there's some fire somewhere. And we're not gonna be bullied into all these guilty, fat, because the Fed said this, clause number. We're going to tell them that. And we will get the right people. We are doing that right now. It gives us all the answers we need. And the bottom line comes down to this. Our mayor, who represents our whole city, you say, you might laugh at him, but take it here to stay until we get our answers. He represents the whole city. And another comment, you can stop, uh, if I close. You don't like it, you can vote me out in four years. Well, wrong answer. We made you chair for four years if you played the tapes.
Sir?
Carol Davis, sixteen thirty, my wife in my east, here in South Bend. Also Secretary Treasurer for the Independent Party of Indiana. And we want to hear those tapes. We want to know what is going on. If this was a year ago, why was it dug up? Who, what, when, where, why? Because there needs to be the transparency. But also, the actions of this, with Boyant and the communication officer, has also put fear into our police department. Other city workers, when are their jobs gonna get cut, and for what reasons? Putting fear into any person or group of people ends up doing a terrorist act under the Patriot Act. And our mayor, if he doesn't want to cooperate, like has been said, we're not gonna wait four years because... because under the state constitution, he can be impeached. And so can anybody else who has been elected to act.
Right, thank you.
Hello, my name is Doctor Deborah Fleming. I live at thirteen thirty, East Amberson Boulevard in South Bend. And I am chairman of the San Joseph County Republican Party. President Dieter, honorable members of the council. I am writing to request your support in soliciting the South Bend Mayor's Office for full and complete disclosure in the case of the resignation and demotion of South Bend Police Chief Darryl Boykins and the termination of South Bend Police Communications Director Karen DePape. Mayor Buttigieg claims that he is, quote, "Working to strengthen the local economy by retaining and attracting businesses, partner with the local public school system, managing a cutting-edge and transparent city administration, et cetera." We feel that for the good of the community, the mayor should make good on his promise of transparency and finally disclose all of the details in this matter. We stand with all of those in the community who are seeking truth and justice. Our core values necessitate that we hold our elected officials to the highest ethical standards. While we are making no accusations of ethical misconduct, we observe that the appearance of impropriety in this matter has caused the citizens of South Bend to lose confidence in the government that was duly elected to serve them. In order to restore public trust in the mayor's office and as a part of loyal opposition, we respectfully request that all tapes, documents and records relating to the demotion and termination of employees of the South Bend Police Department be released to the public and that a full investigation be conducted to ensure that this matter is fully adjudicated. I'd like to present this copy letter to the common council. And I have, I would like a response, please. Thank you very much for your time.
Anyone else?
Good evening, uh, city council members. My name is Darryl McKinney. I reside at five zero one Alonzo Watson Parkway here in South Bend, Indiana. Listening to some of the comments today, um, this evening by the, uh, other, uh, other people of the community right here about the mayor's office. I realize, uh, that it's two sides to every story, first of all. Uh, but, um, however, he works for the city. I believe he works for the city council here, you guys. You guys work for the people here in the city. So, I mean, it should go ahead and be just, we should be working together somehow as a team, I believe, for you guys to get the information from him, to release, uh, release the tapes and the information to us. So we wouldn't be having this much of a problem. We have large enough problems already in the city of South Bend such as murder, crime all across the city. We definitely don't need a mayor to come to the city his first time out and bring more problems, causing more problems in the city. He's the head of the city. He should definitely not be coming, making more problems for the city at the stage we're at right now within this city. I'm a military veteran and that is a thing of, uh, chain of command, I believe. Chain of command which comes down from the mayor's office. And I'm hoping it's to you guys out here, to the community, for the people of this city, to the community. And if, um, if chain command resides within the city like I believe it should, we should be getting some results and getting more help from you guys as well for you to do something about him and that, uh, the people of the community also know exactly what's going on. What you're got, what you guys helped, I believe we should be able to get something resolved. You should be telling us something. You guys should be telling us something a little more also what's happening. And that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Again, Jesse Davis, thirteen thirty-three, East Talbot Street. Um, I'm sure there are several jobs in the city and people who are employed by the city who probably need to have that sunrise sort of swung and, uh, you know, be gone. Uh, but I do believe, uh, you know, there should be transparency. Pete and, uh, several other people that run for office, including our president of the United States, keep touting the transparency, but apparently we don't even have transparency from the mayor's, mayor's office down here to the council. And if we don't have it there, we sure don't have it to the people. And, uh, you know, there's a lot of things going on here. It's really dividing the city. I think it's also dividing the police department. Uh, I've heard rumors, you know, and statements made that now we have an east wing and a west wing at the police department. And we don't need that. Uh, there's rumors floating around that there were some racist remarks made on these tapes. If that is in fact true, whoever the officers were that were being racist or making these racial remarks, they should probably be the ones that are removed because we don't need those kind of officers on our police force. So, I, I, again, it really doesn't matter to me that I hear the tapes, but I think we should know what the tapes were about and why he did things the way he did.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak to the council at this present time?
Ladies and gentlemen, council, Lawrence Grant, seven twenty-one East Dubel Street. I wasn't saying thing, but, uh, a couple of things need to be pointed out. Uh, also the state co-chairman of the Independent Party of Indiana don't deal with anything federal, doesn't matter. I believe in state sovereignty, um, definitely-
Can you say that stuff come to the mic a little bit?
Huh. I thought it was pretty loud enough. You used to hear public speaking, but okay. Um, need to get back to some definite notice over, I'll be quite honest, about the last fourteen years. I'm not going to go there, um, in the city of South Bend. But we definitely need to get back to the constitution and a reference to the situation with Pete Buttigieg. Uh, I do believe, uh, you should be aware of the duties and responsibilities of each and every one of your elected offices as well as that of the mayor. Now, I'm not going to get into our past mayor. Um, but I definitely do believe you need to get back to the constitution. Read with the constitution Commonwealth of Indiana has to say as well as, uh, what your responsibilities are on your own seats as pertaining to what you can actually do when a mayor oversteps his boundaries of his office.
And thank you. Anyone else like to speak to the council this time? Seen none. We are adjourned.